Meeting of the Executive Committee of the Board of Trustees. Dag, would you or Dag, are you doing the role?
Yes, I am. Yes. Is my audio working?
Yes. Yes.
Yep.
Broughton.
Here.
Sisneros.
Here.
Dillan.
Here.
Duran.
Here.
Purtula.
Here.
Sileg.
Here.
Frischwitz.
Here.
And we have a quorum.
All right, let's get to it. So we have nothing. Oh, before we begin, let me ask if there's any public comment on the items of the agenda before the Executive Committee today. And those of you on Zoom use the raise hand feature if you want to bring yourselves to our attention.
Chair Sileg, I'm not seeing any raised hands in the attendee pool.
Okay, all right, well, let's proceed to our agenda. We have nothing in closed session. I don't have a chair report for this meeting, nothing on consent, and so we will proceed to the business calendar, starting with item 3A, which is approval of various work plans.
Good morning, I'm going to be presenting this item. The work plans that are on this agenda item include the work plans of the California Board of Legal Specialization, the Committee of Bar Examiners, the Council on Access and Fairness, and the Legal Services Trust Fund Commission. By way of background, I just wanted to note that the presentation of work plans for approval by the Executive Committee is designed to ensure alignment between the work of the subentities and the mission of the State Bar and the strategic plan of the State Bar. In reviewing the work plans, I just wanted to note that one of the things that I was very pleased to see was the extent to which our recent adoption of the idea of access and inclusion and diversity principles being built in rather than bolted on seems to me to be apparent in the work plans. We see this in the work of the California Board of Legal Specialization, which is working to evaluate grading on the legal specialization exam in particular with regard to improving access to diverse communities to legal specialization. See this in the work of the California, excuse me, the Committee of Bar Examiners in terms, not only the valuation of the California bar exam, this is follow up to previous work that was done on differential item functioning and evaluating and eliminating any implicit bias on questions, but also looking at law schools, collecting better data on the students who are enrolled in law schools and working to improve retention of diverse students in law schools. The Council on Access and Fairness, of course, its entire mission is devoted to access and fairness as its title indicates. And then the Legal Services Trust Fund Commission, which although its core business is providing access to justice through granting, is also collaborating in a number of these other initiatives, in particular on looking at some of the grading initiatives that the California Board of Legal Specialization is working on as well as the Committee of Bar Examiners. So I present these items for your approval. I have a screen share here real quickly of the board resolution, if I can remember where that button is.
In the middle on the bottom.
Now I just need to find the document. There we go. Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair. So the resolution is I'm asking that the Executive Committee approve the work plans adopted by the California Board of Legal Specialization, Committee of Bar Examiners, Council on Access and Fairness, and the Legal Services Trust Fund Commission.
All right. Thank you, Dag. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Would someone like to make a motion?
This, so say I'll move the resolution.
Just Sonia, I second it.
Thank you, Jose and Sonia.
We have a motion and a second.
I think we can take the roll.
Broughton.
Sorry, yes.
Sisneros.
Hi.
Dillan.
Yes.
Duran.
Yes.
Purtula.
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Thank you. The next item, 3B, is approval of an addition to our 2021 legislative priorities.
The presenter.
Looks like Linda Katz is up for this one.
Will be Linda Katz, and she should be getting promoted shortly, if not right now.
Good morning, everyone.
Welcome, Linda.
Thank you. This agenda item is a request to, for an addition to the legislative agenda, and it's a request to send a letter of support for the Assembly Judiciary Committee's request to the Budget Committee for an addition of $20 million to the Equal Access Fund. So I'm very happy to present that to you. I don't know if you have any questions.
I would just note that the board authorized support of a similar request also by the Assembly Judiciary Committee last year. Last year's request by Assembly Member Stone was for 30 or 35 million dollars. This year's request is, you know, based on his communications with the legal services community. He did a budget request for this $20 million.
Okay, any discussion, comments?
Ruben.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, you know, I just want to say that I'm fully in support of this. I think that we all recognize and realize that there's going to be quite a bit of tough stuff for folks to deal with coming out of the pandemic, whether it's tenant related or employment related or health related. And certainly, every little bit helps, and this is not a little bit. I mean, I think $20 million is a significant amount of funding. And I think when you pair that with what state and local governments are getting through the most recent stimulus package, you know, there are going to be some resources available to folks in various communities, and I think the State Bar should be a part of that. So that's my endorsement.
Well said. Thank you for that. Anyone else have a question or comment? If not, would someone like to make a motion?
I would. Duran.
Thank you.
This is Jose, I'll second.
All right. Ruben and Jose. Dag, please take the role.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Broughton.
Yes.
Sneros.
Hi.
Dillan.
Yes.
Duran.
Yes.
Purtula.
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Appreciate your work on this. Item 3C, Appointment of Delegates to the ABA House of Delegates.
Good morning. This is a pretty straightforward appointments item. The State Bar appoints four delegates to the American Bar Association House of Delegates. There will be one vacancy in 2021, created by the expiration of delegate Esther Lynn's first two-year term. Each delegate can serve up to three two-year terms for a total of six years, and the resolution recommends reappointment of Esther Lynn to her second two-year term. Esther Lynn is a Deputy District Attorney with the Orange County DA's office. She is currently Chair of the Committee of Bar Examiners, and in that role, she brings a focus on admissions to her work as a State Bar delegate. She has served on the Committee of Bar Examiners since 2017. Her participation as a State Bar delegate ensures that California will remain engaged at the national level on issues critical to the work of the State Bar Office of Admissions. Happy to answer any questions, but it's pretty straightforward.
Comments or questions from board members or committee members, I should say. Hearing none, would, may I have a motion?
So, you're in.
Seconding Sonia.
Thank you, Ruben and Sonia. Dag, please take the role.
Broughton.
Yes.
Sisneros.
Hi.
Dillan.
Yes.
Duran.
Yes.
Purtula.
Yes.
Sileg, excuse me, not applicable. And the motion carries.
Thank you, Dag. Item 3D, Appointment of Members to the Judicial Council.
That's me again. The Judicial Council is a state constitutional agency established in 1926 to provide policy direction to the courts, the governor, and the legislature concerning court practice, procedure, and administration. The State Bar appoints four lawyer members who serve three three-year staggered terms, and this year, former State Bar Board of Trustees Chair, who was then Board of Governors President, Patrick Kelly, will be reaching the end of his second term. This resolution recommends appointment of David Foo. David Foo's service to the State Bar is long. When the sections were still part of the State Bar, he served as co-chair of the Real Property Law Section. He was honored as Attorney of the Year by the Small Firm and Solo Practice Section, and most notably, he served four years on the Commission on Judicial Nominees Evaluation, known as the JENNY Commission. The third year as vice chair and the fourth as chair. He will bring to the Judicial Council what he brought to the JENNY Commission, energy, intellect, collegiality, and a deep commitment to public service. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, the floor is open for comments and questions. Hearing none. I hope I can hear a motion.
So I'll move the resolution.
I'll second the motion with thanks to Mr. Foo.
Thank you, Jose and Ruben. Dag, please take the role.
Broughton.
Yes.
Sisneros.
Hi.
Dillan.
Yes.
Duran.
Yes.
Purtula.
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Thank you. All right, committee members, I have to apologize. I need to step away for a few minutes, and so Ruben is going to take over, starting with item 3E. And given how briskly we're moving, he may well complete the meeting, so I will see you in our, most likely in RAD next. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It looks like our next item is item E. Review Committee of the Commission on Judicial Nominees Evaluation, the annual appointment of the Chair. Madam Secretary, you have a report for us.
Yes. Thank you. The Review Committee of the Commission on Judicial Nominees Evaluation, known as RGENNY, is a five-member subentity of the State Bar charged with the responsibility of reviewing requests for reconsideration of not qualified ratings received by judicial candidates referred by the governor to the JENNY Commission for investigation and evaluation, and as a matter of fact, both board members that are on our JENNY are present on the EXCOM meeting here today, Joshua Purtula and Jose Sisneros. There are no vacancies this year, but this resolution simply asks that the board appoint a new chair and recommends appointment of our JENNY member, Jody Nunez. Historically, the chair role has rotated amongst the three non-board members of our JENNY. The two other non-board members of our JENNY, David George and Angelique Bonanno, have already served as chair in the last two years, so essentially it's Jody Nunez's turn, and she's more than agreeable.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Any questions from the committee members from Ms. Cohen? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Yeah, I'm so moved. Purtula.
Thank you.
This is Jose, I'll second.
We have a first by Purtula, second by Sisneros, Mr. McLeod, if you would take the role.
Broughton.
Yes.
Sisneros.
Hi.
Dillan.
Yes.
Duran.
Yes.
Purtula.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item F, looks also like a JENNY-related item. Madam Secretary, you're up again, please.
Thank you. The Commission on Judicial Nominees Evaluation, known as the JENNY Commission, is tasked under the government code, as I said in the last report, with investigating and evaluating candidates for judicial office. This item is divided into two unrelated parts. So part one is change in term structure. Currently, JENNY commissioners serve three consecutive one-year terms with a fourth year if appointed as chair. This term structure does not exist in any other subentity. It creates an administrative burden every year on officer, staff, and board appointments liaisons in preparing recommendations for appointment of existing members in addition to recommendations for appointment of new members. This resolution asks that the current term structure of three consecutive one-year terms be replaced by a structure of a single three-year term, and essentially, it will result in no difference. Before I move on to the second issue, I'm happy to answer any questions about this part of the board item.
Any questions for Ms. Cohen? Sonia, go ahead.
Then with this, is there going to be a staggered, you know, term also for the current members?
Thank you for that. The JENNY Commission is a 38-member commission, and every year, about third of the membership rolls off, and we have a new crew that comes on, so it is designed that way.
Anyone else? And well, anyone who can make a motion on this very commonsensical and practical move.
Yeah, let me move on to the second issue because they're combined, unless you want to split the resolutions into two separate votes.
I think it's probably okay to consider them jointly. Go ahead, Sarah.
Okay. So part two is appointment of a co-vice chair. So the April 2021 JENNY Commission meeting, which is next month, marks the end of the 2020 Commission year with Chair Aminder Singh and Vice Chair Stella McGuy. After this April meeting, the new 2021 Commission officers who were appointed by the board in July of 2020 will assume leadership of the Commission. Pursuant to the board resolution from that July 2020 meeting, the 2020 Vice Chair, Stella Knight, will become the 2021 Chair, and Alana Arcuriel will become the 2021 Vice Chair. But sometime in the last month, Alana Arcuriel informed the current officers and staff that due to personal circumstances, she will, she will be stepping off the JENNY Commission during her third year as vice chair. So going back to last year again, there were three commissioners who applied to the 2020, who applied to be the 2021 Vice Chair, Alana Arcuriel, and two others, including a commissioner by the name of Adam Hoffman. Former board appointments liaisons Mark Broughton and Juan Dela Cruz interviewed all three vice chair candidates in the spring of 2020, and based on their evaluations of the three vice chair candidates at that time, they recommended that Alana Arcuriel be appointed, and she was. So fast forward to last month, I returned to trustees Mark Broughton and Juan Dela Cruz with Alana Arcuriel's recent news, and they agreed that it made the most sense to return to that original vice chair applicant pool to select a co-vice chair. So based on their spring 2020 interviews and evaluations of the three original vice chair candidates from that application cycle, they recommend that Adam Hoffman be appointed as co-vice chair. And so really what that means is that when Alana Arcuriel steps down in the coming year, Adam Hoffman will become the sole vice chair and the presumptive chair of the 2022 Commission. And in the meantime, Adam Hoffman and Alana Arcuriel will work together as co-vice chairs in that leadership role. So in short, this resolution requests that Adam Hoffman be appointed as the 2021 JENNY Commission co-vice chair.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Any questions for Sarah? Great. You see, we've all reviewed the staff report very carefully. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
There are motion for both items, both pieces of this one item, rather.
The resolution.
And.
Second by Ms. Dillan, Mr. McLeod, please.
Motion was by Sisneros, apologies, and second by Dillan.
Correct.
And Broughton.
Yes.
Sisneros.
Hi.
Dillan.
Yes.
Purtula.
Yes.
And Chair Duran, may I ask a procedural question? I normally exclude Mr. Sileg, Chair Sileg, because as the chair, he votes in the case of breaking a tie. Since you are working in his stead, do I exclude you as well, or should I burden, possibly urge in calling you on the last motion?
No worries. I will sit this one out. We've got enough votes to carry it.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We move on to our, I believe, is our final item on this morning's agenda. And this is proposed revisions to State Bar Rule 3.662 regarding the Legal Services Trust Fund Commission term of appointments. And this is a request to circulate for public comment, and we have a report from Duan Nguyen.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Duan Nguyen. I'm the Program Manager in the Office of Access Inclusion. This is a pretty straightforward agenda item, but I have prepared a few slides, so let me share my screen. Great. Can everyone see this PowerPoint?
We sure can.
Great. So again, this is a technical item, and it's pretty straightforward. So we're bringing forward to you this agenda item to request to circulate for public comment a change to State Bar Rule 3.662, which deals with terms of appointments for the Legal Services Trust Fund Commission. And as you all know, the Trust Fund Commission is tasked with overseeing the administration of the State Bar's legal aid grants. So just a little bit of background, which is also in the memo. In 2018, as you all know, the State Bar engaged in the appendix eye review process. At that time, the Board of Trustees did adopt seven global recommendations related to the size structure and kind of a governance structure of the subentities. The most notable one was an adoption of a change to standardize the subentities to a term, for their terms to four years. At that time, the Legal Services Trust Fund Commission was slightly on a different path. Instead of rolling out those adoptions for the Legal Services Trust Fund Commission, there is a stakeholder engagement process that was undertaken in 2019 to separately look at the Commission to see if those, any other, any specific changes would be tailored for the Trust Fund Commission. That process concluded in 2019. However, we did not bring forward this rule change in terms of the terms of the Commission for your approval. The last two cycles, though, in terms of appointments for the members of the Trust Fund Commission, did adopt the four-year rule. However, there hasn't been that cleanup in terms of the State Bar rule to align it to the four years. And then just a little bit more background, the Trust Fund Commission is comprised of 24 members. The board appoints 14 members, and the other 10 members are appointed by the Judicial Council. So the current State Bar rules states that the commissioners may be appointed by the Board of Trustees for up to two three-year terms. We would like to send out for public comments the change to the State Bar rule to align it with the global recommendations would then change the two, two- to three-year terms to a term of four years with the possibility of reappointment to serve as an officer. And again, this would be just a streamlined change so that it would be similar to all the other subentities. And then the second bullet point there is just a very technical change. The current State Bar rules says that the terms must start and begin at the State Bar annual meetings. But as you all know, the terms, they're no longer the State Bar annual meetings, and they happen at the Board of Trustees' August meeting. So I have on the next slide the redlined version of what the changes would be, and again, it's changing it to the four years and then striking out the beginning and start dates for State Bar annual meetings. And then I have a motion, unless there are any questions or comments.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. Are there any questions or comments on this proposed release for public comment?
Quick question. Person could not be reappointed for a second four-year term?
No, so it's just a one, one-four-year term, but they can reappoint it if they are as an officer. So if they've served out their four years, they can't reappoint it as a regular member, but if they if there is a recommendation for them to be a chair or vice chair, then you would have authority to reappoint them for another year to serve out that officer position.
And then just, just a reminder, this is, this is to release for public comment. If the public comment comes back with, you know, some compelling reasons to change what you've just suggested, the board would have the opportunity to do that or just to endorse what you've already done.
Yes, exactly. Sorry. So it would be to, yes, so the, the motion is to release this for a public comment period of 30 days. We will report back to you at the next EXCOM meeting, what the public comment, receipt of the public comments. And, and you would then decide whether to move forward with the rule change or modify based on the public comments.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Well, before we take a motion, I will just add that this seems, again, very commonsensical to me to, to not streamline, but to standardize the approach for all the subentities. So we'll see what the public, the public thinks, and with that, I'll ask for a motion.
Dillan here, so move.
Thank you, Sonia. Looks like we have a first from Dillan and a second from Broughton. Sorry, Jose. Mr. McLeod.
Broughton.
Yes.
Sisneros.
Hi.
Dillan.
Yes.
Purtula.
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Thank you very much. And with that, we've come to the conclusion of our business for the Executive Committee. A full 10 minutes ahead of time, time for that second cup of coffee. We'll be back here at 9:40 for RAD. Thanks, everyone.
Yes.
And I was gonna, what I started saying on mute was Chair Stallings, we're, we're about to record, and it looks like we are recording, so. I turn it over to you.
All right, welcome everyone to the March 2021 RAD meeting. Looking forward to a fun, riveting, and exciting agenda, and to start things off, we will take roll calls. So Lisa Chavez, take it away.
Good morning, everyone. Broughton.
Here.
Chen.
Here.
Sisneros.
Here.
Dela Cruz.
Here.
Duran.
Here.
Ginong.
Here.
Purtula.
Here.
Sileg.
Here.
Shelby. Soul.
Present.
Tony.
Present.
Okay, and Stallings.
Here.
All right, you have a quorum.
All right, as has been our procedure for the past couple of meetings, we are going to trail the Rule of Procedure 2201, keep status updates to the end of the agenda to allow any individuals who wish to make public comments and then participate in the bulk of the RAD agenda. So we will trail that to the end, and you'll be provided a link for that closed session item. I would now like to take the time to call for, make a call for public comments. So if there's any members of the public who wish to speak to any item on the agenda, please raise your hand using the function here in Zoom. You'll be promoted, and I asked that you keep your comments to three minutes so we can get in all the public comment. And on the staff level, who's going to be promoting individuals who wish to give a public comment? Is that you, Dag?
Yes, we, we, we will get it all handled on the staff side. It's a combination of different people, but I'm not seeing any hands raised among the pan, among the attendees.
Also, just want to note that trustee Shelby joined us, so welcome. Good morning. All right. Any public comment?
Doesn't appear to be.
All right, we will then proceed to the Chair's report. So I want to take the first part of this Chair report to thank the many State Bar employees, whether judges, investigators, support staff, lawyers, managers, and especially the IT folks, and every other person who does the essential work of the bar. During this pandemic, you have had to innovate, be flexible, juggle the melding of home and work responsibilities, and deal with incredible amounts of mental stress associated with living during a global pandemic. One that has taken the lives of many people that we know and love, and you have shown true resiliency. Your courage to continue to drive the work of the State Bar should not go unnoticed. And I want to take a moment to recognize you and your families and the unique sacrifices that only you know. And I want to take a moment to recognize you and your families and the unique sacrifices that only you know that you've had to make to continue to protect the public during this time. So on behalf of the Regulation and Discipline Committee, thank you. If you were tuning into this, please accept our sincere thanks for your sacrifices. This board and the RAD Committee has also pressed forward during this time in our many projects, and I wanted to take time to remind RAD of some of the things on our plate. You'll be hearing from Professor Robertson and the status of the potential reforms that he has recommended later on in the Board of Trustees' meeting. To aid in Professor Robertson's work, a working group was formed out of the State Bar Court-run Bench Bar Committee. And we had the pleasure of meeting prior to today and strategizing about several potential reforms, including State Bar Court adding to their online self-help materials. This will be at the direction of Judge Brussel and Judge McGill, to name a few, who have experience in this area and lend their expertise to pointing self-represented litigants to applicable laws and rules that are unique to State Bar cases. We had fruitful discussions on what a pro bono, pro bono panel would look like and what other jurisdictions are doing. We looked at what a reduced fee program might do to increase representation among litigants who may not be able to afford a lawyer. I'm excited about the work coming out of the Bench Bar Committee and the continued collaboration with State Bar Court, Defense Bar, and the Office of Chief Trial Counsel. Another project going on right now is Mark Broughton and myself continuing to meet with the probation department redesign program and the work that Lori Milock and her team are doing behind the scenes is incredibly important to the work that the probation departments does here at the bar. State Bar Court continues to conduct virtual hearings and provide litigants with a forum in which to litigate their cases in a timely manner despite the issues of COVID and the constraints placed on meeting in Los Angeles and San Francisco. The, one of the things, and we keep on referring to it, but because we have so many new board members, I thought it would be a good, it would be good to remind all of us of the important work that the 2201 program does, and that's the reports that you're going to be hearing at the end of the, of the agenda. That's the direction, just to give a little, little history, at the direction of the board in 2016, several significant reforms were implemented, including tightening the standards on mandatory recusals where the subject of the complaint involves an attorney with a current or recent personal, financial, or professional relationship to the State Bar or where recusal was necessary to avoid the appearance of impropriety. An administrator was appointed to oversee this program, and we have had incredible talent in this area, including recently Ed McIntyre and currently Jeff Del Sorio. And he will be presenting here in a little bit. Another important reform was paying lawyers to contract with the State Bar Special Deputy Trial Counsel to review and investigate conflict cases. More recent reforms include integrating the IT system, which aided in the identification of these 2201 conflict matters. And then the most recent amendment in 2019, which modified the recusal standard from the judicial conflict event standard to a more appropriate prosecutor's conflict of interest standard. Many people have worked on these important reforms, but I want to express my sincere thanks to Vanessa Holton for her thoughtfulness and integrity in helping lead and implement these reforms. RAD continues to monitor this program and any potential areas that are needed to continue to protect the public and do so in a manner which promotes confidence in the discipline system. The last thing I want to talk about, not necessarily under RAS purview, but use this as a, as an opportunity to let, let you all know what's going on. But that relates to the civility project. The civility project is chaired by Justice Brian Curry out of the Second District Court of Appeal and co-chaired by myself and Heather Rosing, who's a former trustee and the first president of the California Lawyers Associations. We're continuing to look at civility issues in California and work on three projects involving first, a potential rule of professional conduct relating to uncivil behavior or other options the judges may have to rein in incivility in their courtrooms. This project is being headed up by Heather Rosing and the Honorable Catherine Bacall from San Diego Superior Court. The second project involves myself and the Honorable David Wolf from Kern County Superior Court, where we're leading, looking at requiring all lawyers, regardless of when you were sworn in, to affirm and to uphold civility objectives of Rule 9.7, which states, "As an officer of the court, I will strive to conduct myself at all times with dignity, courtesy, and integrity." The third group is chaired by Justice Brian Curry and is exploring the addition of one hour of mandatory civility training and the drafting of civility curriculum that has the most impact. In closing, as always, I want, the work of the State Bar goes on, even in the face of the pandemic, and I want to share my sincere thanks with everyone who is working on each one of these important reforms and projects. We could not do what we do to protect Californians if it wasn't for your selfless volunteering and tireless work. And so thank you to each member of the committee who is pressing forward in these times and continuing the work of RAD and the State Bar. So thank you. We'll go now to the the consents. I want to say consent calendar, but the consent items. Does any member wish to pull items A, B, or C off of the consent agenda? Give everybody a moment to look at that. All right, seeing none. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So Zayal, make the motion.
Second from Helen.
All right, first by Jose, second by Helen, and Lisa, please take the role.
Hey, Broughton.
Yes.
Chen.
Yeah.
Sisneros.
Hi.
Delatrus.
Yeah.
Duran.
Yes.
Gedong.
Yes.
Bertula.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Shelby.
Yes.
Soul.
Yes.
Tony.
Hi.
Stallings. Motion carries. All these pass.
All right. Thank you. Onto the business agenda items. Business item 3A, which is an update on metrics for offices within Regulation Discipline Committee purview and the Discipline Systems Statistical Report. And Lisa, please take us to the, through this agenda item.
Okay. Hi, good morning, everyone. I just want to touch base with you on just one important factor. Staff completed a State Bar metrics report, and we're going to discuss that during tomorrow's Board of Trustees' meeting. Under normal circumstances, we would delve more deeply into the metrics for the offices under the discipline system here at RAD with its own agenda items specifically dedicated to this. However, the metrics report that you're going to review tomorrow does not contain data for OCTC State Bar Court Probation or Client Security Fund. And that's because some of the metrics associated with those offices are also reported in the annual discipline report, and that's a report that we will publish by the end of next month. And so our practice is to wait until the ADR is published to share the metrics for those offices to ensure that all data is aligned. And so our plan is to issue a special discipline system metrics report and its accompanying discipline system statistical report at the May meetings. So does anyone have any questions? I just wanted to share out on that. That's just something we have to, we have to do different in March. Does anyone have any questions on this? Okay. Okay, great. Okay, looking forward to discussing those metrics with you in May. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Lisa. And we'll now go to Chris Andreessen for a complaint review unit update.
Okay, well, staff, please promote for Chris.
Hi, good morning. Can you all hear me? Okay. I am Chris Andreessen. I'm in the Office of General Counsel, and currently one of my roles there is to work as lead for the Complaint Review Unit Program. So I'm going to start a PowerPoint here to share with you. So the Complaint Review Unit covers essentially what we call the second look process. And as a little bit of background, sort of the, as relevant to the crew process, these complaints that we review start in OCTC. And they are, we're limited to complaints that are received from a complaining witness. So those are received in OCTC, and they first go to the intake unit. And within the intake unit, essentially, if the complainant has provided specific facts that state a colorable violation of either a rule of professional conduct or a provision of the State Bar Act, those are going to get moved over to enforcement within OCTC for investigation. If they don't state essentially a colorable violation, those complaints are going to be closed at the intake stage. And we'll, we'll move on to that in a minute. So once they are forwarded to the investigation stage, OCTC is essentially determining whether there's sufficient evidence to prove a violation of the whatever conduct misconduct was alleged. And there, the OCTC has, as you're probably aware, a high burden there to prove these allegations by clear and convincing evidence. So what's not shown on this slide is where there is essentially that enough evidence to bring charges, the investigation's going to go a different route. But for our purposes, where OCTC determines that there's insufficient evidence to prove disciplinary charges, that matter will also be closed after investigation. So in either case, whether it's closed at intake or closed at investigation, those are the matters that are going to potentially come to the Complaint Review Unit. So in 2020, we received 985 new requests for review of closed complaints. So what essentially I'm going to try to share with you today is a little bit of background and the process of the Complaint Review Unit, which is, again, it's sort of like an appeal. It's a second look review of complaints that have been closed in OCTC to determine whether there is appropriate basis to recommend that the complaints be reopened for further investigation or analysis within OCTC. And then the second part that we'll talk about is accusations. These are also known as Walker petitions, and this is within the California Supreme Court, which can provide final review of these closed complaints. So as background, the second look function used to be within the Office of Chief Trial Counsel, and it was known as the Audit and Review Unit. And in 2015, the State Auditor made recommendations regarding that program and found in part, a need for some independence in the oversight of the OCTC decisions to close these complaints. So effective July 2016, the, the rule related to reopening complaints was transferred, the second look authority to the Office of General Counsel. And from there, OGC essentially created what we call the Complaint Review Unit. So that rule authorizes the Office of General Counsel to do sort of limited, limited things. And it's essentially, we can review closures only of inquiries, investigations, and complaints and only upon the request by a complainant. So there are some matters that the Complaint Review Unit is just not going to have the authority to review. And then within that rule, what OGC is authorized to do is make a recommendation to the Office of Chief Trial Counsel that it reopen a case for the stated reasons. The ultimate authority, whether those matters get reopened, remains with the Chief Trial Counsel. So for the Complaint Review Unit, some of the objectives in providing the second look to complainants is essentially giving them a second bite at the apple, so to speak. So where their complaint is closed, they may feel that they have additional facts or evidence or an argument why they're alleged, the, the conduct that they've alleged the attorney has engaged in should actually result in discipline. So we'll review any of that additional information and new facts that they want to provide. Another objective is that it provides essentially effective oversight of OCTC's decisions to close complaints. It provides the State Bar opportunity to provide further explanation to the complainant for the basis for closing. It reduces the volume of Walker petitions filed with the Supreme Court, and that has been sort of shown historically that where the second look function has not been around, the volume of Walker petitions in the court goes up significantly. So this helps sort of gatekeep what, what gets to the Supreme Court. And then where those matters do end up before the Supreme Court, the Complaint Review Unit kind of serves as ensuring that a complete record has been provided by the State Bar in the event these matters get there. So a little look in detail at the Complaint Review Process. Essentially, one good thing that is different in crew fairly, in fairly recent history is we are now also able to utilize the Odyssey system. So we have access where there is actually a complaint, where the complainant has requested review. We can see all those records in the Odyssey system, the electronic files, all the evidence that OCTC has placed in there. And that has actually aided us particularly during the pandemic to be able to review these matters remotely. So essentially, the Complaint Review Process, it's a written appeals process, and the complainants are given 90 days to request review. And I should back up a little bit. When their matters are closed within OCTC, whether it be at intake or at the investigation stage, every complainant is provided with a disposition letter, and that letter explains the reason that their complaint was closed, but also provides them information and instructions on requesting the second look review from crew. And so those instructions will let the complainants know that they have 90 days to request review and that those requests have to be provided in writing. And along with the request that they provide, they can give us any additional facts or information or evidence that they think is going to be relevant to our review or to the determination on their complaint. So once it's received, these complaints are assigned to the reviewing attorney. And within OGC, the majority of the OGC attorneys are assigned to the crew team as part of their regular workload. And when we're conducting these reviews, we have to review the entire OCTC file, and that includes the original complaint and any evidence provided by the complainant, any response or evidence provided by a respondent where these matters are investigated, and, and essentially any other documentation that OCT has gathered. And this can be court records, it can be bank records, witness interviews, a lot of different things. And then, of course, we review the, the closing determination, and sometimes there's memos we review, but always a disposition letter. And essentially, what we are looking for, the standard for OCTC to reopen a closed matter is where there is significant new evidence or other good cause. And so those are the things that we are looking for when we conduct these reviews. Did the complainant provide new evidence that OCTC was not aware of when these matters were closed? Or is there some other good cause to reopen? And typically, this, that would have to do with pieces of information that need to be further investigated. So upon completion of our review, there's several different dispositions that come out of the Complaint Review Unit. The majority is going to be a Walker letter, as we term them, which essentially is affirming OCTC's decision to close the complaint. And we can talk about the Walker process in a little bit, but when we do send the Walker letter, it explains our basis for why the complaint is not going to be reopened. And then it does provide instructions to the complainant how to request review by the California Supreme Court through filing a Walker petition or an accusation. The next disposition is a recommendation to reopen, and this would be essentially a memo to the Office of Chief Trial Counsel, providing the reasons that the Complaint Review Unit would recommend that this particular matter be reopened for further investigation. Some complaints where we receive a request for review are declined, and that's essentially an untimeliness factor where they have submitted their request for review beyond the 90-day period for review. Where those matters are declined is untimely. We still provide the complainant the information for filing a Walker petition because they are then permitted to go that next step. And then just for, you know, And then just for, you know, completion here, we do have a few cases that we term as removed as non-crew. And it's, it's really more just to make sure that our statistics are tracking, but there are some we receive that appear to be request for review. And then once the attorney gets it and takes a look, we actually realize for various reasons that it's not a true request for review. And so those don't get treated on the merits. So a little bit of statistics from 2020. By coincidence, we received 985 new requests and we also resolved that many, which normally it doesn't work out that perfectly. As stated previously, I'm not sure if you guys can see all of these on my screen, but as stated previously, the vast majority of these are affirmed and that's 885. We have about 50 or so that are declined as untimely. And then this past year, we sent back 30 with recommendations to OCTC that those matters be reopened. And then again, 19 were removed as non-crew. So looking at a little bit over time, for the last four years, the requests received have fluctuated. But 2020, we saw significantly fewer requests for review and that's possible that that's a result of the pandemic. It's, it's unclear. But our recommendations to reopen have kind of decreased over time. And again, in 2020, there was, there was 30 that we sent back. So the, the last piece that I wanted to discuss is the accusation process where the complainant can challenge a State Bar decision to close their complaint by filing an accusation with the Supreme Court. And so under this case that I stated here, it's the Enray Walker case. Essentially, the standard that the Supreme Court looks at is that the petition will be granted where the complainant sets forth facts, which if proven would constitute grounds for disciplinary action, that these charges were previously presented to the State Bar and the State Bar arbitrarily refused to grant a hearing is, is the way that that case is worded. And so you can see in this chart for the last four years, you know, typically there's a hundred or so petitions filed with the California Supreme Court. And in those last four years, only two of those have been granted. So in 2018, one was sent back. In 2019, one was sent back. And then just a little, a little bit of information of our involvement in this process. Occasionally, the Supreme Court will take interest in a particular petition and they will ask the State Bar to provide an answer to that accusation. And in recent history, we've been asked to do that on four different occasions. In 2019, one of those after we provided an answer was granted. They've asked for two other ones that have since been denied. We provided an answer and then the court denied those petitions. And there's one currently outstanding where the court has asked us for an answer. And that's essentially been put on hold while we complete, or the, rather, the Office of Chief Trial Counsel completes additional investigation. And so that is my presentation for today. Just to sort of sum up, the, the second look process is important in the State Bar world because a lot of times the complainants.
Well, that was unfortunate timing for.
Okay, so it's not just me. Did she, did Krista cut out?
She, she, she did. She did cut out. I, I think obviously, right, she's the conclusion here. The, the, the point being that the second look review offers complainants who think that OCTC acted improperly in closing their case, it gives them an opportunity for an independent look at the information that they have supplied and an independent review of the, of the process that OCTC engaged in to determine whether or not there is merit to their complaint that it does set forth sufficient evidence that, that if the facts are proven could demonstrate clear and convincing evidence of misconduct. Chris, I just did the first bullet of your slide, if you have that conclusion slide, if you wanted to do the next two bullets.
Oh, thank you, Donna. I, I wasn't sure where I dropped off. Let me get that back. So essentially the, the last point that I wanted to make is just that the, the second look process is required.
It, it is required. And, and what we do find though is even though we have a first look, a second look.
I'm sorry. It might be, if you guys are all at the State Bar offices, your, your internet connection may be just having global difficulty because so far everyone is not intelligible.
All right. Does anybody have a good, Chris, could you try your connection again?
Is it? Yeah. Is it working now?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I keep dropping off, but my presentation was over. So I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for Carissa?
There's a mention. I don't know if you can hear me anymore.
Robot is screening your voice and converting it into a.
It's the robot filter.
They want to log off and log back on. I don't have another solution.
No, I couldn't hear or switch to telephone. Next meeting.
So maybe Carissa, one of the things you can comment on is of the 985 cases that were resolved in 2020, you indicated that 30 were sent back to OCTC with a recommendation for reopening. I know in some settings, and you can remind us that if it's, if it's in the metrics, if it's in the discipline system statistical report, where, where is it? But in some settings, you do break down those recommendations to reopen and how many are based on new evidence that is provided in the crew process and how many are based on other information that, that OCTC needs to engage in further investigation of information that they had.
Yes. So when, when OCTC provides their statistics, they do track whether our recommendation was based on new evidence received from the complainant or what the Complaint Review Unit determined was other good cause. And I don't have those percentages in front of me, but just my sense of that is they're fairly equal with slightly fewer being on the new evidence side. But they're, they're not that drastically different, the, the reasons that we send them back. And, and if it's helpful, you know, essentially when we do make a recommendation based on good cause, it really is for kind of two general categories. One, either there's a piece of a fact or something missing that we think needs to be further investigated. And that is just something that OCTC has to do. The Complaint Review Unit doesn't do any investigation. And then the other piece of it is, is where, and it's not very common, but the other piece would be where we feel that they have all the investigation they need, but they came to the wrong conclusion as to how the rules should be applied. So those are kind of the two broad categories why we would send something back for good cause.
I'm going to try one more time. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Chris, and maybe you could just tell us of the cases that have, of the complainants after second look who have filed Walker petitions with the Supreme Court, how many has the court granted and sent back approximately?
In the, in the last four years, they've only sent back two. So one of the slides showed that every year there's a little over 100 Walker petitions that are filed and of those only two have been sent back in the last four years. So one was in 2018 and one was in 2019. For the 2018 case, Crew actually did not take a look at the merits of that case because that one had.
What she's going to say is it had a Walker before it came to second look. I think we're done.
Not a good day for tech.
And we're not all in the same place.
All right. So any questions for Vanessa or Carissa or Donna? All right. Seeing none. I am going to adjourn the open session portion of the RAD agenda. We are going to be reconvening into closed session. I would anticipate that we will be coming out of closed session at approximately 10:30. So if members of public want to tune back in about 10:30, we should be back into the regular Board of Trustees meeting. So if.
Can I, when you're done, can I just make a brief announcement?
Absolutely. You, just real quick, everybody should have received an email from Lisa with the closed session link. All right, Sean.
Great. So I just want to alert members of the public who are following our meeting today. So you don't wait around and are disappointed that Rad will, as Brandon explained, Rad will complete its meeting in closed session. The board will return to open session only for the purpose of receiving public comment on the closed session items. And then the board will finish today's meetings in closed session. So I just want to alert folks to that if you're following us. And that's all I have to say.
All right. We will see everyone who has a link to the closed session agenda. Reported out. So this time I'm going to adjourn the RAD meeting and hand it over to Sean.
Thank you, Brandon. So I think we all could use a 10 minute break. So we will commence the board meeting at 10:50. See you then.
Let's see. Dan, do we have a quorum yet?
I'm going to defer to the Secretary of the Board. Sarah, can I pass that to you to tell whether we have a quorum or not?
Um, let's see. One, two. You do. Chair, you have a quorum. Would you like to take all?
Yes, please.
Rotten?
Here.
Chen? Chris Nero?
Here.
Dela Cruz?
Here.
Dylan?
Here.
Duran?
Here.
Gunag?
Here.
Bertula?
Here.
Shelby?
Here.
Sewell? Stallings?
Here.
Tony?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. All right. So this morning and perhaps into the early afternoon, we are going to be working exclusively on the closed session agenda items and only the first four, 7001 to 7004. Item 7005 regarding appointment of the State Bar Executive Director is both on the closed session agenda and the open session agenda. So our plan is to take up the open session portion of that discussion at the end of tomorrow's open session meeting. And then we, the board will proceed into closed session to continue discussing that topic. So with that background, I would like to invite the public to comment on the four closed session items that the board will be considering in closed session shortly. Please bring yourself, bring yourself to our attention by using the raise hand feature on Zoom if you would like to address the board. Not seeing any hands.
I will note, Chair, that Chen has joined the meeting, so I will mark her as present.
Thank you. All right. I don't see anyone asking to give public comments, so we will proceed into closed session pursuant to the following sections of the government code. 11126 subdivision E1, 1126 subdivision E2B, section 11126.2. And with that, you, board members will have your closed session link mailed to you, I think, Day. Can you, or Sarah, can you clarify? And then we'll go into closed session.
The link has been sent.
Okay, very good. See you on the other side.
Okay, looks like we are reconvened in open session. I have taken over the chairmanship of the meeting. Trustee and Chair Suleg had to step out early. And so I'm here to let folks know that the board is still considering items 7003 and 7005 in closed session. We will reconvene in the morning to complete those discussions. We do have an open session agenda item, an open session agenda for tomorrow as well, and we look forward to seeing everyone there. Thank you so much. We're adjourned until tomorrow morning.